I was going to mention this idea about data and what Carolina does in collaboration is something that you're going to hear a lot about. We see it in so many different areas, and I thought about it this morning because the Chronicle of Higher Education, which we all read every morning, it tells us everything about what's happening in higher ed, had a feature story today about North Carolina. And that one also was about big data. It was about our SILS, our School of Information and Library Science, about a project that they're doing that again is another collaboration. And interestingly, it's a collaboration with Harvard and NCA and T, again, another really great collaboration. And this one, again, is another big data, but they're developing a whole repository for what they call dark data. And those are all the numbers behind studies that have been published. People have spent millions and millions of dollars gathering data, they publish it, what happens to it? Because you can imagine, you're using data that people may have gathered in other contexts. We have to start doing that, too. And they are becoming the national repository and creating the model for people to be able to have those data. So again, it's another example, just in the news today. So I loved seeing that. And now it's my pleasure to introduce our next speaker, Javed Mustafa, who's the director of the Carolina Health Informatics Program, which we call CHIP. We're very good at this, NC Traxx, and now we've got CHIP. We've got names easy to remember for all of our programs. And the mission is to advance UNC Chapel Hill's commitment to improving human health through health informatics research. Big data, again. Data sharing, development, and education. Thank you.
And it's a great honor, and I'm really excited to be here this morning to be able to talk to you briefly about Carolina Health Informatics Program. And one of the key strengths behind this program is collaboration at a very cross campus and across many programs on campus. And as part of that sort of spirit of collaboration, I would like to introduce some of my colleagues to you that are here and some students as well. So I'm Javed Mustafa, as Chancellor mentioned. I'm actually myself an example of collaboration because I'm jointly appointed between SILS, School of Information and Library Science, and Biomedical Research Imaging Center, which is in the School of Medicine. And I've been here on campus for about eight years now. So the colleagues that I have this morning, who are going to be also presenting and we're sharing a little bit of their research and their backgrounds that are members of CHIP and members of various academic programs on campus, I have Arlene Chung, and Stacy Dusatzina, and Timothy J. Carney. And they are representing schools of medicines, pharmacy, and public health this morning. And I have a few students here. I have Fay, who's a master's student, Andrew, another master's student, and then I have Vincent, who is also a master's student. Vincent is interesting because he actually decided to pursue a health informatics master's program after he has completed his career as a surgeon. So a little bit of overview of what I'm going to be talking about. I will give a background on health informatics. What is it? What do we study? What is the training involved behind health informatics? A bit of a background on CHIP, where it started, where it is now, and potentially where it's going, and the programs and research that we are conducting. And then I'll finish with a bit of a discussion about future of health informatics at UNC. So Chancellor Foltz several time mentioned big data. Our focus is on managing and analyzing and interpreting that data to improve health. And that requires, as you can imagine, a massive use of information technology, but we also bring in, you know, skill sets and knowledge and competency from health affairs and related disciplines. And by design, it has to be interdisciplinary. It can't be just housed in one place. So we try to bring together expertise from across campus. What are we trying to solve with health informatics? So I will focus on three or four big areas that are problems. And this is also building on the theme of what John was talking about, that you get the headlines about new drugs, new devices in the newspapers, but what really can change healthcare is the process. Better, faster, cheaper. How do we get there? How do we solve those problems? One of the big problems is safety in healthcare, in that process, right? And we know there's a large number of people that die due to safety reasons in hospitals, about 440,000 people. It's the third leading cause of death in the United States. The quality of care, as again, the part of the process of healthcare, US lags some of the developing countries like Japan, Switzerland, Italy, Australia significantly. The cost of care, when we compare care in the United States, the cost with developing and developed world, we are expensive, significantly higher than many countries in the world. Again, going back to the quality, on the other hand, is not as high as would like to be. Another major problem in the process and care is care equity and disparity in care. We know that certain socioeconomic groups and ethnic groups have major barriers in terms of access to care. For example, as the graph is showing, that when we look at poor versus high-income people, the poor people have significant barriers in terms of receiving care and access to care. So what can we do with big data and IT and technology to address maybe some of those challenges? Fortunately, we know many decades of research now show that use of computer systems and improvement in the process of delivery can improve care quality, can improve safety, can help patients become more engaged in their own care. We can aggregate data to improve surveillance and improve population-level healthcare. So this is what CHIP was built for, the Carolina Health Informatics Program, is to develop training and education program at advanced level. And we brought together, so far, eight academic units on campus to develop this program. And those eight academic units are right there, as you can see, SILS, Computer Science, Medicine, the Health Sciences Library, Public Health, Dentistry, Nursing, Pharmacy. All are involved, and they are formally involved in that. They have signed an MOU to support this program. The history of CHIP, a little bit on that. It goes back about counting on the planning stages, six years, with strong support from the Provost's Office initially. We started with graduate certificate programs in clinical informatics and public health informatics and nursing informatics. And then we moved on in terms of our planning on a master's program, which is, really should be our bread and butter in terms of funding the program in the long run on training side. And that was approved last year. And now we're moving on to planning our PhD program in health informatics. We are about halfway in. We just heard from the GA that they would like to hear from us and make a presentation to them, which I count as good news. So the offerings include all of those graduate certificates, as I mentioned, in the master's program, and professional science master's program, and biomedical health informatics so far. Our faculty, we draw from, as I mentioned, across campus. We have faculty search now ongoing, and I will share a little bit more on that in terms of recruiting new faculty who are doing cutting-edge work in health informatics. At this point, I'll take a little bit of time to have our colleagues come in and talk about a bit of their research.
Good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you all today. As Javed mentioned, my name is Arlene Chung, and I'm an Assistant Professor of Internal Medicine and Pediatrics in the School of Medicine. I also wear a different hat as a practicing primary care physician, and I recently board certified in the new medical subspecialty of Clinical Informatics. I'm also one of the KL2 scholars in the CTSA. So my informatics research really pivots at the intersection of health information technologies, patient care, and quality. And my primary focus is really in the development and design and implementation of health, patient-centered technologies to improve health. The current paradigm, sorry, I am not advancing these correctly, the current paradigm for delivering healthcare is clinically usually in the clinical context, where patients see their providers every three or four months if we're lucky. But unfortunately, this leaves us with a really limited view on the patient's symptom and health status. As you guys all probably already know, most of our patients actually don't come home with us. They live outside the walls of our healthcare system. But what if we could capture a patient's health and symptoms longitudinally as they kind of go about their daily lives? So fortunately for us, the world's rapidly becoming more and more connected. Two-thirds of adults have smartphones, 84% have internet access, and over 112 million wearable devices and sensors are projected to be sold by the year 2018. And with hospital-patient portals becoming more standard, monitoring a patient in their real-world environment is actually now a reality. My research seeks to bring the patient's voice and experience into routine care processes through patient-generated data, through some of the wearable devices and sensors I have on today, and Chancellor Foltz has as well, awesome, and electronic questionnaires linked to the electronic health record. My hope is in incorporating this unique and valuable source of data directly from patients will enhance our understanding of chronic illnesses, improve communication, satisfaction, hopefully, health outcomes, and also enable research. To realize this goal, though, we need methods work to really establish best practices for visualizing and representing this complex data alongside electronic health records and approaches to make this information actionable, which we kind of talked about already today. I highlight two of my publications here, where I focus on some of the challenges of patient-generated health data. In the Journal of Oncology Practice, where I outline the direction for the field of oncology, and in Jamia, the premier informatics journal, where I explain the role of this data in medical records and also in reimbursement. I'd also like to highlight some of our work funded by the Patient-Centered Outcomes Research Institute, or PECORI, where we've partnered with inflammatory bowel disease patients to really create a patient-powered research network. Patients power our research in every single sense of the way, and so far, 74 research questions have been posed by our members, 945 votes cast for the most promising research ideas, and so far, 12 of those ideas are actually being researched. We're going to longitudinally follow these, over 14,000 members, where they'll contribute symptom data and also data from devices like Fitbit, so that we can really better understand sort of the other factors that influence Crohn's and colitis other than medications, some of the things that we collect on a clinical setting. So also, through our Phase II award, which was just announced this week, over the next few years, we're going to expand these efforts, so we're really excited about that as well. But my overall hope, though, is that through creating some of these novel technologies and solutions, such as some of the ones I highlighted today, that we can really change the way we deliver healthcare here, not only here at UNC and North Carolina, but also across the US. Thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. My name is Stacy Dusatzina, and I'm an Assistant Professor in the UNC Eshelman School of Pharmacy and jointly appointed in the Gillian School of Global Public Health. And like Angie and Arlene, I'm also a case scholar at the NC Traxx Institute. So today, I'm going to talk with you a little bit about my work in informatics and how it's related to access to care. So I'm really interested in a couple of things, and a couple of things really drive my research agenda. One is that I believe that patients should have access to treatments. I also believe that effective treatments should be made affordable for patients. It's really unclear sometimes how costs and policies are really impacting people. So I use big data and use it a lot to find out how the population is working and how policies are working to impact patients. I'm going to talk with you about two studies. One of them is related to the out-of-pocket cost for an important cancer medication called Gleevec and the impact on patients with chronic myeloid leukemia. This was a paper I published last year, where we looked at how much patients were being asked to pay for their cancer medication and how that impacted their use of the drug over six months. So what we found were, first, in the bottom graph, you can see, health plans are paying a very large amount of money for cancer medications. So from year to year, you see there's an increase. And in 2011, which was our most current year, we found that health plans were paying over $5,000 a month for therapy for these patients. We also found that patient costs were quite variable, but that if patients were being asked to pay more, they were 70% more likely to discontinue their drug than patients paying less. And this is a life-saving drug. Patients who take this therapy have a normal lifespan. Patients who don't take this therapy rapidly progress towards death. So there is no question clinically that this is a necessary treatment. In the other study, where we just published earlier this year, we wanted to look at two large data sources to understand how much patients were paying for infused chemo. We were able to look at what uninsured patients were charged, what Medicare-insured patients were charged, and what privately insured patients were charged for the same infused chemotherapy. And what we found was that unfortunately, if you were uninsured, you would be asked to pay between two and 43 times as much for your infused chemotherapy as Medicare pays for that same therapy. And if you were private, in comparison to privately insured people, uninsured people were paying two to five times as much. So what you can see from this is that there are certainly access issues that we need to address. And so we use big data in order to kind of uncover these problems and point to quality issues. Thank you so much for the opportunity and for your support of the Health Informatics Program.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to present today. It's a pleasure. Thank Javed for allowing me to participate in this conversation about informatics. I'm an Assistant Professor in Public Health, School of Public Health in the Department of Health Policy and Management. And I guess you could say that my philosophy of informatics was sort of developed during my nine years at the CDC, seven of which were spent in the National Center for Chronic Disease, where I developed this overarching view of surveillance and asking the question, how can that impact on local health outcomes? And I guess if I had to self-describe, I would call myself a public health intelligence engineer, asking the question, how can we make the public health system and our healthcare delivery system smarter at what it does? Javed talked earlier about the issues that are driving our rankings globally in the healthcare system. And when you look at issues of access, equality, and disparities, and issues of efficiency, the questions that I fundamentally ask are, how are we monitoring and tracking deviations in those areas that lead to negative health outcomes? One of the areas where I focus my attention is related to cancer health disparities and cancer health equity. And with cancer health disparities in particular, the losses that we incur from inefficiencies and inequalities range in the billions. There is an approach that is being taken nationally to address some of these issues of finding areas where we can impact through our philosophy of informatics on the healthcare system. One in particular is the learning health system, where the learning health system model, the IOM says, the Institute of Medicine says, if we were to implement, we would have achieved somewhere in the area of $750 billion in savings and saved 75,000, close to 80,000 lives. And so my research is asking the question, how can we achieve efficiencies in those areas? One of the approaches that you can take, actually two of the approaches, one is a top-down approach, the other is a bottom-up approach. And either of these approaches, you're looking at the healthcare system almost as a system of systems. So at the top level of that, we're asking the question, where are there gaps in our surveillance intelligence that enable us to detect a failure, results in failures in detecting, rather, changes in the population that might impact on health? The second level is looking at the healthcare system and asking questions about, how well is the healthcare delivery system monitoring deviations from standards of care? The third level is asking, what are smart communities and how can they better manage vulnerability in their environment? And the bottom level looks at the patient and the health consumer and asks a question, how can we inform their level of healthcare decision-making for better self-management? And those reports on the outer edges talk about how this is actually a mandated initiative. Two of my examples in my particular research, one, from the top down, I use the Ebola crisis to make the case for this argument of what a smarter public health system should look like. And that article would be published in the American Journal of Public Health this August, and I'm excited about that. The bottom-up approach, however, is the one that actually drives me the most. And I don't know if you could see that photo there, but that's me in eastern North Carolina, where eastern North Carolina is considered one of the areas in this state where we have the highest concentrations of disparities and inequities. And that's the center, an empowerment seminar, rather, that I was doing at Tarboro, North Carolina, with a group of breast cancer survivors, asking them, what do you need to know to help you feel empowered in making and engaging your healthcare delivery system fully? And so I'm excited about the work we're doing out in eastern North Carolina, as well as our national-level work, and I think it can move North Carolina in becoming a smarter healthcare system overall. Thank you, John.
So moving on, I want to start focusing on what are the exciting things that are going on with CHIP? And you've just seen glimpses of some of our bright faculty members, and I'm happy to say that we're recruiting more, thanks to the central administration for a matching fund that was provided in 2013. We have recruited five faculty members, and they are in schools of medicine, schools of nursing, dentistry, pharmacy, and computer science. And there are some new searches that just started in SILS, in public health, and the School of Medicine. And I mentioned to you that the PhD program is, I believe, we're about halfway in. It's very important to have the PhD program launched because that's going to also support our faculty and recruit advanced students for research. You know, the demand for health informatics is on the rise, and we have national statistics that show that it'll grow up, you know, by about 18% next year due to changes in rules and laws in our country, and especially with a significant emphasis on digitization of health records. There have been new jobs created, significant numbers of new jobs, and these are high-level jobs that pay a good salary. At the research level, we mentioned big data several times. There are specific areas of big data that are focused on health, that are allocating new money for research and training, both at NSF and NIH. NSF is an important development because it supports fundamental research in health informatics. And I'm happy to say that we have a couple of those already. We've gotten NSF grants for health informatics on this campus. And we have developed alliances, other alliances, and you see NC Traxx in bold there. We've had support from the beginning from NC Traxx for developing training and educational programs for health informatics. We've received national funding for training at the early stages of CHIP, which is very helpful to recruit new students into the program. We've developed very strong alliance with Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina. We've trained about 12 students, about a dozen students that are employees, full-time employees in Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we have a very strong consortium across North Carolina with other UNC programs that have health informatics focus. And we also work closely with Duke. Recently, we received this big data grant with Michael Kosarock leading this initiative in training. And David Gotts, whose picture is there, is an Assistant Director, actually, of CHIP, is a co-investigator in this big training grant that we recently received. So what's the future? And how do we measure ourselves? And where are we going? We would like to join this club of 18. Those are the big biomedical health informatics programs in the country, and there are about 30 of them. But this club of 18 are specially selected because they receive NIH training fellowships every five years. That's kind of a marker for reaching the highest standard. As you can see, I don't know if you can read, I'm sorry about the font size there, Johns Hopkins, Harvard, Vanderbilt, University of Washington, they're all UCLA. We have an opportunity in 2018 to go for this training grant, and that's what we're working toward, to be able to reach this stage. We talked about, a little bit about innovation, of course. UNC has a strong track record in health informatics, especially in pioneering work on electronic health record data standards. We've developed one of the earliest electronic health record system at UNC. We are building on new innovations in big data management, data warehousing, clinical decision systems, mobile health. And our vision is to create this innovation factory. We're about halfway there in the Health Sciences Library, which is very strategically selected area because it has all the health affairs schools around it and other related programs around it. And we would like to build it by modeling MIT's Media Lab, but focusing on health IT. Finally, we have developed very potent collaborations, I believe, with Research Triangle Park companies and organizations, as well as government organizations. And some of the companies that are on our CHIP board include Qantas, SAS, IBM, Allscript, and other related organizations. So I will stop here for now. Thank you very much for the time, and I'll take questions if you have some.
Anyone have any questions?
So a few years ago, the Honors Program, in conjunction with the College of Arts and Sciences, the Social Medicine Department in the School of Medicine developed a program called Medicine Literature and Culture. And it was more of this interdisciplinary approach to understanding patient-centered narrative health. And I just wanted to see if you could elaborate a little bit on the work that's going on in eastern North Carolina and how you may or may not be using qualitative data to help understand how we can fix and use that in conjunction with big data to help improve health across the state.
I think we can, again, our health informatics is a very large and a complex area, of course, and we have to choose certain areas that we can be distinctive and really excel in, drawing on our expertise. And from the description you provided to me, it sounds like it's really involved in terms of literature, text analytics work. And with ECU, actually, ECU focuses strongly on medical coding, putting specific standard data into the system and training people to do that. We don't have medical coding as an expertise, so we'll try to collaborate with them. Eventually, to do text analytics, what you do is you go from semi-structured data to structured or encoded data. And I can see a link there potentially that we can develop. We're not engaged in that type of collaboration yet with ECU.
First of all, I just want to say I am absolutely blown away. I'm incredibly impressed and proud of the work that all of you are doing and your colleagues. I know it's a big team's working on this. And the fact that you're using all this massive research and data to save lives and do it more efficiently and effectively, it just doesn't get any better. So I think I've got two questions. One is, I would think, not just Blue Cross Blue Shield, but I would think any health insurance company would want to partner with you or hire you or listen to everything you have to say. So that's sort of one question. Then the other one is, so all this great research and it's real bottom-line oriented, which I also love, what are you doing or how are you taking this data and then working with the policymakers in Raleigh and in Washington to change things? with the policymakers in Raleigh and in Washington to change things?
Thank you for your kind comments. You know, one of the things, before I answer your questions, in terms of collaboration across these eight units, you know, my hair didn't look this gray or white when I came to campus about eight years ago. And the way we accomplish that collaboration is not really deal with or ask the question, which often towards us, is who owns this program? Where is this program housed? And I'm glad you didn't ask that question. It's UNC's program, and we're really proud to have this program as a UNC program. And, you know, after the meeting, I can answer how that really works. The question about, you know, working with other insurance companies, we're open. I think Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, having such a massive, I should be careful, Blue Cross Blue Shield NC, having such a massive coverage in North Carolina was a relatively easy decision in terms of developing a partnership. They actually approached us and said, you know, we have need for training, and we're so glad that you developed this program, please come to our campus and talk to our employees. And we've continued to develop that relationship, and I totally agree. Pairs, we call them pairs in the healthcare context, is the elephant in the room that you often don't think about in terms of improving healthcare. You, you know, naturally think about your provider, your doctors, but they pay for your healthcare. So they have a significant influence on how that care takes place, and they understand that, too. And so we're learning a lot from our collaborations with them, and we hope to expand collaborations with other insurers. On the policy side, you know, CHIP is a, technically, it's about a five-year-old program, and the research end of it is, in my view, is just really taking off in the last year or so as we're getting new faculty and you are getting into the PhD stages of this program. We do hope to, we have some government representatives in our board. We do hope to work with Raleigh, very much so, and nationally. And, you know, on various indirect ways, we do collaborate with national organizations, but we can do a lot more on that end.
Thank you. This is just fantastic. Again, you put another face on big data, but I think also, it's a really clear demonstration why research is really at the heart of making these sorts of advances. They don't happen without that. That's just terrific. Of course, as a university, we care about pipelines. We're always looking at how do you develop new fields, and what's so exciting about this one is that this really is a pretty new field. And so it's so great to see all the new investigators and coming in. And I wondered if we could ask a question of a couple of the students, because you brought a lot of the pipeline here.
Yes, yes.
And in particular, if the students would be willing to tell us, were you even as undergraduate, what got you excited about this new field? And what can we do to get more and more people to come into the pipeline, even at the base? Because this is clearly important for the development, well, of our state economy, but really for the nation in so many ways. So if any of the students would be willing to share, and I know you get students that come in at all different levels, so that would be great.
Hi.
Hi.
So my name is Andrew Novakotny, and I'm in the Master's Program, like Jaavid mentioned earlier. So I actually started out as a biochemist. I went to NC State University, and I work at RTI International in their Metabolomics Group. And kind of what got me involved in this health informatics kind of thing is the idea of personalized medicine and how we can essentially tailor these new therapies that are coming out that are based on these omics field and bring it into the clinic. And I figured this program in particular would be probably one of the best ways for me to learn how to interact with physicians and clinicians and see what they need from an analytical and a chemical standpoint. So in short, that's pretty much how I got involved.
Did you feel like you had, what would be a barrier for students? Would they be just thinking they didn't have the math? I mean, are there barriers? You found your way there. You had pretty sophisticated training even before you came in. Can you think of ways that friends of yours might have said, oh, I just can't ever do that?
I think a lot of students are originally turned off by the idea of getting a doctorate, possibly, and they don't realize that there are other avenues that they can take, such as a master's or even a certificate. And for me, you know, talking with Dr. Harkins, who's also very involved in the program that I'm in, it really, it helped to have people that said, you don't need to have a doctorate, you can, you know, find these other avenues to go on. So maybe, like our other speaker said earlier, get these people early, tell them that there's other ways that they can go about, you know, finding their dreams and their careers. Thank you.
I can't help share a little story about Andrew. He actually found the program when it was in the planning stages. He found the Appendix A on a website somewhere and contacted me about the program before the program was approved.
He was already a data miner.
My name is Vincent Carrasco, and I'm not the typical student in the program here. And it's, my story is very long, and I'll keep it very short, but I was in Dr. Smith's position and was on faculty here, and actually had to give up all my research because I needed to focus during the 90s on being a surgeon. And it actually got to the point where I applied to the program in 2000. And then I intersected another part of one of the people who talked here with Gleevec. I developed leukemia and had to retire after being a tenured associate professor in surgery here. And I'm here, one of the first people in the state to be on the drug. And of course, I've got five kids and got kicked out of the house when I got better and ended up doing startups in RTP, and I've done a number of startups. And the last one, I figured, well, I'll retire again. That was in 2009, now still with four kids to go to college. And I was riding along, and there was this hook on, well, then Airport Road that was hanging out there, of which I got hooked. It was a radio announcement about Jaavid's program. And I said, data, stupid, that's probably where I need to go. And so through the work of you folks, I've had the opportunity to have a second life as well as a second career, and it was the research at the Cancer Center that enabled that, and the informatics program here in Sills that's enabled me to come back with almost 30 years of clinical experience to infuse that into our understanding. And I study the aging brain and using neurodiagnostic tools in order to build human-computer interactions that'll help us diagnose problems early, because we're all working until we're a little bit older. We all use computers. And there has to be some way that we can use that to our advantage, and that's what I'm working with Dr. Mustafa about. So a little unusual. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fei Yu. I'm currently pursuing my master's degree in biomedical and health informatics. Actually, it was accident that leads me to this program. My family moved to North Carolina about three years ago. Because of my family member's injury, I started to learn to use the patient portal of the electronic health record system. Because this experience compared with the experience I had before when I received healthcare in the place I used to live, I remember before I moved, I purposely went to my medical provider's clinic and the hospital to ask them to release my medical record to myself. I remember I signed a bunch of paperwork and took some time to wait for the x-ray records, and then I got the records. However, because of my move, and all of these records are misplaced, so I cannot use them anymore. Compared to this experience, I feel it's so convenient for the patient to have their own records and get access to their own data. My previous background was library and information science. So I'm thinking, maybe I should do something combined with healthcare to see what I can do more. I received my PhD in library and information science from the University of Pittsburgh, so I always have like a research focus. After my family moved to North Carolina, I'm starting to plan what I should do here. So I remember one day about, I think, two years ago, I launched a webpage and Google, I remember I used the keywords, library and information science, healthcare, and I got a chip program. It's the first result. So I wrote, I looked at the directory and the names, I find Dr. Jamar Mustafa wrote him my email, that's why I end up here. So that's my story. Thank you.
Any other questions? I was just sitting here thinking that maybe next time, Chancellor, we ought to have this in the Dean Dome or Keenan Stadium and invite the whole legislature for them to come in and see how these wonderful people, and we've had two presentations this morning, how they affect the lives of the citizens of North Carolina and the citizens of the world. Congratulations, and thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you very much.